I call the border selectmen's meeting for June 12th, 2017 to order. As required by open meeting law, we're informing you that we will be video, audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience that plans to video or audio tape must notify us now. Hearing no one, please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Thank you. Anyone for weekly briefing? Public comment and an...
I'll do both, if I may, Mr. Chairman. As your CEVAC representative, I just want to alert you to the fact that CEVAC is having a special, relatively urgent, meeting later this week to consider the implications of a recent filing by Eversource, which could have an impact on the value of net metering credits. Eversource has had a general rate case going on since the first of the year. The comment period was closed at the end of May. Recently, Eversource filed some new documents, and it's not clear whether the comment period will be reopened. And it's also the case that the opportunity for any party to become an intervenor in that general rate case has gone by. But for net metering credits, there is a formula. And some of the variables in that formula, the values of them have been affected by what Eversource has filed. For example, Eversource is going to depart somewhat from the practice of, for years now, of recovering all of its capital costs for constructing and maintaining and repairing the network that distributes electricity. That's all been recovered in the past from usage charges, okay, per kilowatt hour. Some of that is now going to be recovered as a flat rate, which, as an economist, it should have been, and more completely than they proposed. But that means that the per kilowatt hour rate that would be charged in the future if this petition from Eversource is approved, the per kilowatt hour charge for distribution would go down. And that's in the formula for net metering credits. So we're having a meeting to see what the implications are for our contracts with the towns, and what, if anything, we can do about it legally.
Larry, when is that meeting?
Pardon?
When is the meeting?
It's on Friday.
Friday, what time?
It's 9:30 in the morning.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we usually meet on a Thursday. I will get back to you, whether it's Thursday or Friday.
Thank you.
It's 9:30 in the morning. It's in the Open Cape Meeting Room at the top of the hill at the County Edifice Complex.
Thank you.
That's my weekly briefing. I just have a public comment, if I may. Those of you here and in the audience who noticed on the front page of today's Cape Cod Times, a story about a neighbor, Lucy Duffy of Brewster, who's going to France on the plane now for three days of commemoration of the arrival of U.S. troops in France in World War I. And I'd just like to point out that in addition to a French connection, she has a Harwich connection. Her parents, Charles and Rebecca De Vries, he was a pastor of the Unitarian Universalist Church in Brewster for a while, lived at the corner of Bank Street and Lover's Lane, and both of her parents are buried in Island Pond Cemetery. So it's a very interesting story. Her father was an Army Medical Sergeant at a U.S. Army Base Hospital in a small town well behind the lines. It was a huge complex. All that's left is a water tower. It was a sufficiently large hospital that the wounded arrived by train. Anyway, so this is the 100th anniversary of the arrival of the U.S. troops in those little villages, and that's where the love story began.
Thank you, Larry. Public comment and announcement.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of Chief Kilmett, I would like to introduce and welcome Theodore Montero IV as the newest member of our dispatch team. TJ will undergo two to three months of training with a veteran dispatcher. TJ was selected from a pool of approximately 25 candidates. By far, he was number one. He is a Harwich resident and graduated from Harwich High School in 1996. For the past 15 years, he has been employed at Safe Harbor in Hyannis, which is a safe and secure family shelter for emergency assistance for eligible women and children who are homeless due to domestic violence, and we are very proud to have him join us.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since Larry updated you on the CEVAC, I'll update you on Cape Light Compact. We're in the process of moving out of the Barnstable facility over to a place on White's Path. We're not quite there yet, they're still painting and all of that, so we'll be doing that soon. But as a, in reference to that Eversource rate case, Cape Light Compact is an intervener, and they're actively following that case. And the Attorney General also is actively following that case. And the Cape Light Compact has participated in several hearings, has gone to Boston to testify, and they're got your best interest in heart, at heart.
Great, thank you very much. Moving on to the consent agenda, Janelle.
Mr. Chair, I move that we, A, approve the appointment of Theodore R. Montero IV to the position of full-time emergency telecommunications dispatcher with the Harwich Police Department effective June 18th, 2017; B, approve new application for Class II and IV auto licenses for Richie's Garage; C, approve application from the Harwich Chamber of Commerce charitable foundation for their eighth annual 5K road race; D, approve the new job description for part-time videographer/camera operator; E, approve the petition by Eversource Energy to install conduit and one hand hole to provide electric service to 18 Ocean Ave; F, approve annual appointments for the Harwich Police Department for FY '18; and G, approve annual selectmen's miscellaneous appointments for FY '18.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. I just want to point out, under the appointments for the Harwich Police Department, my mother's name is on there. She retired last year. She's a part-time employee that gets called in every now and again. But I did check with the state, and there is no conflict of interest. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Congratulations. Okay, next up, under Old Business, South Harwich Meeting House Draft License Agreement and User Agreements, Judy Ford.
Quick, I've never got quicks.
Tonight's gonna be quick.
Let me hand out a couple things first here. Thank you. I didn't have, when we were coming on the 19th, I was gonna have a draft agreement for a user agreement just for your, you know, for your interest in discussion. I didn't have that ready, but I do have it now, so obviously Republicans aren't gonna act on it tonight, but pass them down.
I get it.
How many do you need, actually?
We'll keep, we'll keep copies for Julie and Don.
Which is actually part of that, but I could separate it because it's in the year.
Those are left.
No, we need one. One more of those.
These?
That one. Doesn't Chris need one?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
There's the second one here.
Good, how are you?
Thank you.
There you go.
You have copies of the license agreement?
We do, yes.
Yeah, over there or over there?
Anywhere you, anywhere where you're comfortable.
I guess it doesn't really matter, then.
So Judy, we, we have, we're gonna take up the license agreement first.
Mm-hmm.
And, and we noticed that you, I noticed that you were looking for an extension for multiple years.
Yeah.
And I believe that the license agreement was for construction purposes, and then we were gonna go to a user agreement?
Yeah.
So...
Well, that's complicated in that we keep trying to keep it straight. The difference between the license agreement with us and the user agreement for the community that's gonna be using it, if someone came in and, like, did a wedding, or a funeral, or an event, that was gonna be the user agreement as opposed to the license agreement with us.
Okay.
So I know that makes a difference.
Chris?
Yeah, just, thank you, Judy.
Oh, sorry.
Just, I, at least, I haven't been directly involved in this from the, from my time here, but I have been overseeing parts of it. It was always my understanding that we would do a license agreement through the time in which construction was completed, and then we would transition. And I did, I did dig up, and I have the most recent version.
Yeah.
It goes back to 2013, so recent is a, is a relevant term.
Yeah, it goes back quite a bit further than that.
But I thought you and I could get together, and we'll talk about that.
Sure.
But just, I, I think that if you could give an update in terms of where you are for when you anticipate construction being done.
Sure.
So that way, we could, about two or three months before construction being done, you and I can work on the building use agreement.
That...
And then bring that to the board for execution.
That, that sounds perfect. But just, just, just in, in the things that you just discussed, just to make that clear, the license agreement when we started was for not only the construction, but if you read the original one, and the one that went all the way through, it was for also developing program pending or after following the finishing of the construction. So that was the original agreement, and that's, that's what it still says, actually, in there.
Okay.
So anyhow, what our plan was, was to have a license agreement renewed. When we started, we renewed it for a three-year period, and it was a three-year renewal. As we got closer, and we thought we were closer than we were, when they felt, the previous board felt that we were closer to opening, they felt that we better to update that whole thing. And at one point, there was a talk about a much more complicated, long-term, 25-year sort of thing, which we did not think at all was necessary, and we believed that a license agreement is perfectly adequate. And I think the way we saw it going is, under license agreement, if our organization did the occasional, maybe three or four events a year, to raise funds for the building, which is the sole purpose of our organization anyhow, and then, within this license agreement, we have always paid the expenses for the building since day one, everything from alarm systems to, you know, all the utilities and every, insurance, everything that we've done all along. It is not actually directed inside this thing that we would continue to pay those bills going forward, only because we felt that, in the end, I think the building will raise a fair amount of money in user fees, which we didn't feel we really wanted to go through our organization, but we were hoping it would go into a designated account that the town would set up, and all of those fees would then go into the town. And then the town maybe would pay the, the expenses, just the running of the place, going forward, if, if the funds all went to the town. We decided, we talked about this with our board the other night, and we figured it might be complicated to have, if the funds all went to us, which we really weren't comfortable with, then we would still have to pay the bills and take on all the town's expenses at that point. So we decided we better, if, if the money was designated in account to the town, and then the town would just pay its basic expenses going forward, and then our organization would pay for anything over and above, if there, if there was anything over and above, which I doubt that would be the case. And we would also continue to raise money for repairs and program and just basically the running of the building.
Thank you. I mean, my, if you're comfortable with it, last year you were before us, and we granted a one-year extension.
Yeah.
I would just as soon grant another one-year extension, and then, when the, when you're done, and we go through the user, I mean, the user agreement.
Uh-huh.
And we'll figure out the best language and use whilst we have a full board.
Yeah, the one thing, just, Mr. Chairman, as I, as I think of it, and to the point, you know, there, I think there are a couple options to pursue. One option would be to continue the private arrangements that have been made, and the accounting would have to stay within that nonprofit, within that private arrangement. But I know, one time, thinking about this, that if we were to bring that back into the town fold, have that be basically a town committee, go through the accounting of the town, then there would be very little liability or organizational element that would be needed other than the Friends Group, similar to what we do at the Council on Aging, Friends of the Council on Aging. So, you know, there are a few different constructions that we could do that, you know, I'm certainly willing to do a memo, we can meet and kind of lay out the pros and cons of each approach, and then bring that back to the, to the board. But just as the board will remember, on the middle school, in order to segment that off and have a good sense for what the costs are, we actually created a revolving account that the money is going into, and we have the purposes in which those are being expended out of. And I would recommend doing something the same for the South Harwich Meeting House, if we wanna take that approach. But I think the one thing, I know I've been kind of waiting for as kind of a kickoff, is we need to have the building be completed. And, and one element of that is, you have builder's risk for when a building's under construction, it's a different element of insurance. Once the building is done and operational and in part of our inventory, it goes on to our regular property schedule. So, in my mind, you know, not just in my mind, but I think in the eyes of the law, that, you know, that kickoff point of transitioning from a building under construction to a building in active use, and a town asset under active use, there's two different mechanisms.
Sure.
And I think we can work those details out.
Oh, I think so, too.
I don't have any issue, you know, in terms of presenting. But I think it's important for the board to kind of, to know that, that, that transition will come, and if we do have to set up a revolving account, that would take town meeting action, and that will be, we won't be able to finalize that. We could certainly do a license agreement to bridge us to where we need to get, so I think it's all doable. I think this evening, the key element should be, when's the building gonna be done, and how long does the license agreement need to be in place to...
Right.
...get us through that construction phase.
Well, right, right now, I think that we're, really, it's, the thing is moving so fast, I'm having, honest to God, trouble keeping up with it. But it's, it's wrapping up very, very relatively soon. We only have a couple of major things that we're working on, and even those are the smaller major things. We know it's gonna be done before the, by the end of the year, but I think my only concern would be, we have an offer from the Chatham Corral to do a benefit concert for us there in March. So that would be within the year period. I mean, would we have permission to go ahead and, once the building is open, or do I come back beforehand? I, I can't really make that agreement with them unless I know that I can do that, if you know what I mean.
Mr. Chairman, you know, we do, we've done a fair amount of work on doing these rental agreements for the middle school.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we could certainly do a boilerplate to accommodate anything to get us through to town meeting of next year.
I think that would be good.
So we're, we're a little bit more ahead of the game, if you would, this year.
Yeah.
Because we've spent a lot of time, I see Carolyn in the back, I gotta give her a lot of credit for doing, doing all that work.
Yeah.
But, you know, she's done an outstanding job putting together this documentation, so we have a pretty good established process for when people wanna use town facilities.
Okay, all right, so we're good, then.
Janelle, you have a question?
No, he answered it.
Okay. Dawn?
No, he, Chris answered my question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Be a little remiss if we didn't say this before you left. It's been a long slog. That building could have very well been rubble in the ground by now, knowing what the history of it was. We bought a building, and we didn't know what to do with it. So, kudos to you and all the myriad of volunteers that have been spending a lot of cookie sales and Beatles concerts.
Whatever else.
You've done, you've done a lot of work, and thanks from the community.
Well, I did wanna say that, Dawn, particularly for yourself, it's kind of like Mark Twain coming in and going out with the comet. Dawn was on the board the year that we started the project, and, but for his support, we wouldn't, I wouldn't be sitting here, and that building probably wouldn't be standing. So it was a phenomenal, and here he is on the end of it, so it'd be nice to have you at the opening, and finally have it done, so.
Yeah, I can repeat what Dawn said. Excellent job. I went on the last tour of the building, it looks phenomenal.
Looks great. You guys are coming tomorrow, too, right? Do you have a time for that?
Yeah, actually, Judy, on that, the Capitol Outlay Committee wants to go around and do a tour.
Yeah.
And I did recommend to them to stop by. If you want, leave your telephone number, what I was gonna do is, I'm going around with the tour to see the different sites. I can give you a call, like, 15, 20 minutes before.
My problem is, I have to be in Boston in the morning, so I kinda need to have some...
It's Wednesday, though.
I mean, Wednesday.
Wednesday, Wednesday, yes.
Okay.
I have another obligation tomorrow morning, don't I?
Yeah, so Wednesday, do you know...
But Wednesday morning, yeah, so...
It would be morning, then?
Yeah, it would definitely be in the morning, it'll be done by noon time.
I'm in Boston in the morning, so maybe we can reschedule then. I know that's on another subject, but I can't miss that. And they, they never gave me a time, so I was never sure.
Okay. I mean, the other option, if you wanna leave a key, then I'm, I know Robin's away.
I could do that.
I mean, I'm happy to, I'm happy to take it and be the caretaker of the key, so...
Okay, I'll bring you a key, we'll go with that.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
Can I get a motion to extend the license agreement for a year?
So moved.
Do you need me to come in and have people sign that, or how do you wanna do that, or...
You'd have to wait for a second.
That's true.
A second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll sign it, you pick it up with Sandy.
Okay.
We'll need two more signatures.
Yeah, we just need to amend that date on there, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so it's gonna be the 30th, again?
It'll be June 30th of 18 instead of 20.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, under New Business, appointment of Barry Worth to Utility and Energy Conservation Commission and revised charge, charge of the committee. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to review, the charge that we have proposed to you, the, the first paragraph is new wording of what we think is our fundamental mission, which is to promote the efficient use of energy by the municipality, to assist residents, whether they're homeowners, businesses, or institutions, achieve efficient energy usage, to promote renewable energy use and production, and just be a general resource for, for ratepayers with questions about energy rates, as we, we have been a couple of times this past winter. The second paragraph is verbatim from the old charge, having to do with the committee's involvement with new construction or renovations. The third paragraph, we think it needs to be spelled out that while coincidentally, and in the past, and highly likely in the future, that whoever serves as the town's representative to the compact, as Valerie does, and as Barry Worth did for 15 years or more, and is involved with CEVAC, are likely to be interested and be members, but it not be mandated. The fourth line is again lifted from the original charge. Anything that you specifically direct the committee to do would be undertaken by the committee. And we, the last paragraph, having to do with, with green communities, is a sufficiently major undertaking that we think that ought to be spelled out in the charge. Regardless, and it doesn't presuppose that we're going to recommend it, we're going to investigate it and make a recommendation, one way or another. And in that connection, I'd like to announce that our regular monthly meeting this Thursday, Mr. Seth Pickering, who's the Southeast Regional Coordinator of the Green Communities Division in the Department of Energy Resources, will be a guest at our meeting and will be making a presentation. Public is invited, you are all invited, and I, I hope that our selectmen's liaison, Ms. Kavanaugh, will be able to join us then. So, the, the basic point is, with respect to focusing on simply energy, is that that is a large area of undertaking. We're a small committee, and the original charge, which had utilities in it, you know, covers a lot of things other than, than energy, in which it, it just so happens that because of Barry Worth's experience and mine, we have some knowledge of the regulation and, and the nature of the other utility industries, but I don't think it's our business to get in to tell the town, what is the best wireless telephony package you should employ, acquire for, you know, for town employees to use. You've got people evaluating that kind of thing. So...
Thank you, Larry.
That's our recommendation to the board, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Larry. Chris, in changing the name of, of the committee, is that just a vote to change the name of the committee? This isn't charter-driven at all, correct?
If it was just a, a committee itself, not within the charter, then it would be within the board's purview to do that.
Okay. Barry Worth certainly served the town for a long time, but he, he will need to fill out a citizens' activity form.
I believe he's done so, but I'm not certain.
And then we need to schedule an interview for him.
Yes, okay. So it was not included in your appointments tonight?
No.
Okay.
No. Do you know if he's on for...
I don't think he's on tomorrow.
And then, I did speak to Julie Kavanaugh today, and she was going to come to your next meeting and discuss this charge with you and the, and the name change.
Okay.
And, and also go over, you know, being sworn in, and, and taking the ethics test, and, and the whole routine. So, we're not gonna vote on this tonight.
Okay.
But I certainly, I see no problem with the new charge.
Okay.
I like it, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board.
Questions from Dawn, anything?
Nope.
Janelle? All set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thanks for your help on the net metering credits.
Well, I, I meant to tell you, the reason for the alert is, we may have to mobilize the legislative delegation to do something if the other channels are not available. As Val pointed out, the compact is an intervenor, but that's $40,000 in legal fees right off the top. I'm not sure CEVAC, in our financial circumstances, are gonna undertake it, but we may have to go through the legislature.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, under Town Administrator's Report. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a, a couple things, well, actually, I have several things beyond what I have on here, but just to take these in order. On the Chatham-Harwich IMA, I have put forth a part of our financing plan for a ban of bond anticipation notes, the, the financing of the, the Chatham-Harwich IMA. So we do need to coordinate that. Apparently, in the agreement, it has language that upon signing, we owe, I think it's just north of $2 million. So we, we are getting that money to have, we'll have that money available after, after July 1st. But I do think we have to do some coordination with Chatham to, to make sure that both parties kind of sign and execute that. In, in my opinion, both sides went through all the details, now it's just a matter of coordinating the signing event, and then also making sure that we can make our first payment.
Our intent is to sign that next meeting, correct?
I've had a little change of heart in terms of that, Mr. Chairman, so either be the next meeting or potentially July 10th, so we may wanna coordinate a little bit.
Okay.
And I think you're coming in on, when you come in on Wednes, you know what, I'm gonna be out Wednesday.
We'll figure it out.
Maybe we'll, we'll figure it out. On the item B here, the, just an update on Sacro Tucket Marina, I know at the last meeting, there was some discussion, a meeting before, and I did ask, I had a meeting with John Redone and with Bob Cafarelli to kind of go over that project, to answer some of the questions. We kind of know internally what we wanna do. John, we didn't put it on, formally on the agenda for tonight, 'cause I think you wanted to have a full board in attendance. John's away on June 19th, so we'd like to see if we can schedule that for July 10th and, and do a more complete overview of that project. But I wanted to at least get some material for the board, so you would have that and know the status of, of where we are.
Thank you, Chris. And that, that will be, I expect that we will have them before us, because I have more issues now reading the memo than I had before.
Okay. That's not the idea behind these memos, but...
There's no clarity here whatsoever, so I, I definitely would like John before us. And, and I think in, in here, it says that John will be the project management.
The project manager, that's correct.
So I, I don't see a project yet, so before we start that process, can the board at least weigh in?
Sure.
Thank you.
On the non-resident taxpayer meeting, just to remind folks again that that is tentatively scheduled for August 7th, and I know, Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned, hopefully I'm not too presumptuous here, that you were thinking about doing the Beach 22 discussion that same night, since a lot of the issues are involving people that are non-resident taxpayers. So just to kind of give people a, a heads up.
Chris, are we gonna line up the same group that we normally have to give the non-residents kind of a, each, each department head or relative department head?
Actually, I, I'm glad you said that. I was curious if there are individual boards, or not boards, but departments that you think, normally, we have people in from recreation for the beach permits and in recreation programs, DPW for kind of cleaning the beaches, and then the Harbor Master for harbor-related activities, especially we have projects. I don't know if there's any other group or board...
We had last year, I thought the police chief was good. The water superintendent was here talking about water usage.
Okay.
So maybe I'll, this week's agenda meeting, I'll give you some more thoughts, and if Dawn or Janelle...
Yeah, if, if you have, uh, different, usually, we have a discussion. If you tell me what of interest you have, then we'll line them up with the, uh, department heads to have them come out and do a little presentation. I don't know if on wastewater, I mean, I could certainly do the, the wastewater piece, so that way we don't, we don't have a formal wastewater department head. Uh, but I can do the, the wastewater, 'cause I think that may be of interest to people, the, the status of that. Okay, so if, uh, you have, if you have any specific, uh, thoughts, we'll certainly happy to bring those different departments out.
Well, I think, you know, anything, Chris, this year that has a, a town meeting vote for a lot of money, even the fire station, too, it might be nice to have, um, a quick overview of what we're doing with East Harwich Fire Station or what we're, what we intend to do and...
The, uh, next item I had, just, uh, there's been a, a few, uh, things of like email and concerns that have come up. I just wanted to kind of at least, uh, publicly kind of comment on some of these. I know there was, uh, some activity in regards to why do we, uh, chip seal roads? And I, I just, for folks, um, you know, that, that we have a hundred and forty-two miles of roadway. As a general rule of thumb, to do full-depth reconstruction is about a million dollars a mile. So, it, it is theoretically impossible for us to get to all the, the different roads. Uh, what this town does, and, and it's very similar to what, what we've done or what I've seen in, in other towns, is that, uh, this past year, we chip sealed, uh, twenty-five roads, four point two, uh, four and a quarter miles, for about two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So, it, doing chip sealing is kind of a good bang for the buck. Uh, the process here is very similar to, uh, what I've seen in other communities, that you take roads that do not have a lot of, uh, traffic flow on them, and you establish, a lot of folks, uh, when they see a road, they, they, uh, they establish what they call a base, a base course, uh, which, and you lay your wearing course on top of. And what happens is usually you put the base course in, and then for those roads that you want to protect, that you don't want water to penetrate into the road, you put the, uh, chip seal, which has a, a rubberized, uh, sealant. So, you create, if you would, a, a cap over the road that prevents the road from breaking up. The freeze-thaw cycle is really what does roads in. So, there, there is a prioritization that DPW, uh, gives to some roads, ones that aren't heavily traveled, are good candidates for the chip seal treatment because it's cost-effective. And those roads that are heavily traveled has to have the, uh, the wearing course. Uh, you just can't do, uh, chip seal. It's not as effective when it has heavy amounts of, uh, traffic on it. So, I will ask, I know we have, um, uh, Link coming in, uh, to talk about some road issues. Uh, so one of those, and I'll transition to that, is on Lower County Road. We are looking at, and we had in the capital plan to, uh, seek a, an appropriation that's above and beyond our, our typical financial means, and he's looking at doing Lower County Road. Lower County Road would not be a candidate for chip seal. That would be the, the full-depth reconstruction, uh, in areas. But I know we did receive some, uh, correspondence in regards to, uh, somebody that wanted to have a crosswalk installed. And I think one of the things that is part of the, uh, Lower County Road Plan, when that's brought in, uh, there will be kind of a, oh, a, a viewing of what is going to be done in that area. And we will look at, uh, where crosswalks go and, and belong. Uh, that work, at least un, under the, uh, capital plan, is being slated for, uh, next year's town meeting, so it would be probably, uh, next fall or, yeah, next fall, that that work would be, um, be contemplated to be done. So, I, I thought, you know, someone had a, a little bit of, uh, interest in the crosswalks. We will also lay out kind of a process for, uh, I think people think sometimes crosswalk is just a matter of slapping some paint on. There is a lot of, uh, engineering, uh, that goes behind, 'cause we have to create a, a safe passage for people. And ideally, we, we'd want to also comply with the ADA Rules, Americans with Disabilities Act. But the one that, the main one that we have to follow is, uh, the Massachusetts, uh, Uniform Traffic Control Devices, sometimes referred to as MUTCD. Uh, and we have to comply with the MUTCD standards, which actually is a federal standard, I believe, not just a state standard. Uh, so, just on that Lower County Road, uh, we will be having a, a, a presentation, uh, in the next month or so. The other presentation is on, uh, West Harwich, the twenty-eight, Route twenty-eight corridor. Uh, we have, uh, received some positive news. I think I reported that, that the, uh, the, uh, MPO group, uh, the planning, uh, folks have put us on the schedule for, it's about six million dollars worth of work, uh, to do West Harwich from the, um, Herring River up to, uh, the Dennis Town Line. So, that work is, um, has received favorable reaction at the, uh, at this, at that level. On, um, we have had some staffing, uh, issues, and just to kind of, um, comment on that a little bit. I know we had our, I, I try very hard to make sure that we keep our, uh, offices open. Uh, in our assessing office, it's a three-person office. We had a transition in one position and a, a departure, uh, by the, the clerical staff. Uh, so we were down to one person that, uh, in department head. Uh, the department head had surgery, uh, so the, the office was closed. Uh, if the department head had given us, uh, a little bit more prior warning or directly to her supervisor, uh, we would have made arrangements to have an alternative, uh, opening. So, I apologize that that, uh, office was closed for a day. Uh, when you have twenty-two different departments, you try to do your best to, to keep it open. Uh, we will have a discussion with the department head to make sure that she coordinates with the, uh, the finance director, so that does not happen again. Uh, on the assistance position, we have done the, uh, that's vacant. We've done the internal posting per the, the union contract, and that has closed, and we didn't have any internal applicants. So, we are, uh, advertising that. I think it hit Sunday, uh, this past Sunday, so that ad is out for, uh, for people. And on the clerical position, that internal posting is, is still operative, uh, assuming that we don't get any, any, uh, internal candidates. That also will be, uh, will be sent out. So, we, we have some work to do administratively in terms of, uh, kind of righting the ship, if you would, for the assessor's department and, and getting us back to full staff. And then, in the last, uh, week or so, uh, actually even today, uh, I got notice that Barbara Ann Foley, our Council on Aging Director, has decided to retire, so that will be effective July third. And her, uh, primary assistant, Gail Barnes, had previously, uh, gave us notice that her last day will also be July third. So, I have, uh, administratively, we have some work to do to, to put together some contingency plans to, to make sure that we keep those two departments. And I know sometimes this happens, you know, in, in my time here. I mean, I've had the opportunity, uh, to, to help to rebuild, uh, the police department. We had a kind of a major, uh, reorg in that. The water department has been reorged. The golf department's been reorged. So, it's not unusual that we get transitions, um, but, uh, these ones kind of coming on top of each other, so there will be a little bit of a focus of administration to, uh, make sure that we do those, uh, transitions, um, successfully. And then, uh, just lastly, I have, um, the, just a, a reminder that the One Cape Summit that I know, uh, we have those meetings posted, uh, One Cape is the county's effort to kind of coordinate different activities, including the, uh, the wastewater initiative. And then I think on Friday, were they gonna do, was it housing? I think they were gonna do a housing component and other, uh, regional efforts. So, I, I know I've signed up to, uh, attend those, and I think you're gonna have on the, uh, next agenda, the, uh, discussion that we had with, uh, Pleasant Bay Alliance, uh, to make sure that that evening before the other evening program, there'll be a meeting that the board will be requested to attend, that Carol Ridley invited the three towns to, or four towns to, uh, to have a discussion about, um, moving forward with the Pleasant Bay.
Which night is that?
That's, uh, the Thursday night, the twenty-second.
Right.
So, a lot of, a lot of different activities going on, and just so people are aware. And as was alluded to, uh, earlier, the, uh, on Wednesday morning will be the, uh, Capitol Outlay, uh, tour of, uh, different communities, uh, different, uh, functions within the community, uh, or projects within the community. So, that we do have that posted, so if members of the, uh, board want to join us, uh, you're certainly welcome, and with the official posting, I, I believe we're kicking that off at eight o'clock or eight-thirty, I think it's eight o'clock, at the community center. And I, we didn't get the bus, so it'll be carpool, so if people are willing to, like, I have to clean out my car to allow people to have extra seats in it, um, probably use a few people to, to drive around.
Board members that want to register for One Cape should do that through Sandy in the office?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Selectmen's.
Wait, wait, I have some questions.
Questions, Chris.
Um, yes, for a couple of the items that you went over, um, can you repeat to me, it was, so you said for, uh, true road reconstruction, it's about a million dollars a mile?
Correct. And that's what it's called, full depth. Uh, a road has about, uh, eighteen inches of subbase, and then they have a, a base course. And then what you put on top of that is either a wearing course, which is blacktop, that you'd see a traditional road, or, uh, another alternative is to put that chip seal, which is basically a slurry layer with, uh, stones, that, it, you actually get really good life out of those, and by creating the, uh, slurry seal on top, you prevent water penetration. Water penetration into a road can really destroy the life, so that's why you see a lot of the, uh, when you have cracks, they s, they do slurry seal, that black, uh, almost paint-like substance. It's to try to, to keep the crown of the road or the, uh, the top coat from getting too much water in it.
Um, so, what's the cost for chip seal? What was that?
Yeah, I, I will ask, uh, Mr. Hooper was, uh, was off today, uh, but he said it's, uh, for four point two-five miles. Uh, it was two hundred and eleven thousand, so about fifty thousand dollars per mile, as opposed to the full-depth reconstruction, which is, and that's just my industry term of about a million dollars a mile.
Okay. Um, so then, uh, that brings me to the Lower County Road. So, I remember the Lower County Road being somewhere around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that right?
Mm-mm.
That's not right.
It, it was, um, and I'm going from memory. I, I thought in the, uh, capital plan, it was about three point five million.
Did we get a grant or something for seven hundred and fifty? I just remember that, that number.
Matching funds.
Matching funds.
No. Lower County Road, because we want to avoid, um, if we were to try to do the tip project, transportation improvement program, uh, we would have to have, uh, sidewalks on both sides, bike lanes. That's a very narrow stretch. We, we'd run into the same issue we ran into on one-twenty-four, where you would destroy the character of that road. So, uh, Mr. Hooper put forth in his capital plan to basically maintain the road as it is, but that would be, when, when the town has the say, then we have to use our own funds. I think maybe what you're alluding to is, uh, on the project for Route twenty-eight and West Harwich, which is part of the, the state roadway, uh, but we're looking at, uh, the total cost on that for design is, um, I think it's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have identified, and this is something that we'll, we'll have additional information for the board. I was hoping that we would get, uh, the full amount of that three fifty from, uh, the county commission as kind of, uh, roadway money or roadway study money. Uh, we only have about a hundred and seventy-five, so we don't have the, the full amount that I was hoping and, and had been indicated to me that we would have. So, for that, we are getting some portion of that funded by grants or, or county money or, uh, commission money. In terms of that project, that's about six million dollars, and that would be totally funded from federal, federal funds.
Right.
Uh, channeled through the state. So, that one, the Route twenty-eight corridor, is actually, uh, the vast majority of that is other people's money, OPM, as my old boss used to say.
So, Lower County was three and a half, three point six?
Three and a half is, uh, the number that sticks with me, but we'll, we'll have that